Good evening. The February 12th, 2019 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding irregular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call roll.
Mrs. Beth McCall, District Two.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District One.
Yes.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District Three.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District Five.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Bianello, Executive Director of Career Technical Education, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
I will gladly. Madam Chair, and good evening, Madam Superintendent and School Board Members. Our CTE programs cover twelve different industry sectors. We range from manufacturing to transportation, to healthcare, to culinary arts. But one of our largest and most relevant sectors here in our community is agri-science. And beginning this Friday, going to February 23rd, we'll kick off one of our district's premier event, events, and that's the 2019 Southeastern Youth Fair, where we'll have close to 1,000 middle school and high school students participating in twenty-seven shows and events. We'll also have nine hundred second grade students taking field trips to the youth fair. Did you know that Marion County agriculture supports 27,515 full and part-time jobs that generate 1.2 billion dollars in annual revenues? Did you know that Marion County has over thirty-five hundred farms which contribute to fifteen percent of our economy, local economy? Did you know that our Southeastern Youth Fair is the largest nonprofit all-youth fair in the state of Florida? It's massive, it's fun, and I invite our school board members and all of our viewing audience to come out and please take a look. You'll get a chance to see our students apply their knowledge in real-world unpredictable situations. And speaking of unpredictable situations, I think we've got one a little bit in just a few minutes. But first, I would like to bring up Madison Dixon from Howard and Ms. Riley Rowe from Bellevue High School. Riley's gonna lead us in the inspiration, and Madison will lead us in the pledge.
Good evening, School Board Members and guests. My name is Riley Rowe, and I'm currently serving as the Florida FFA District Five President, Southeastern Youth Fair Ambassador, and Agri-science Student at Bellevue High School. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the over 1,000 4-H and FFA members that will be participating in the upcoming Southeastern Youth Fair. There are twenty-seven shows and contests, and throughout the week approximately 2,000 animals will go through the barn. It's probably fair to say that when most people think of the youth fair, they think of our livestock shows, which are our biggest events. However, what I feel best represents the fair is what is going on behind the scenes. Kids ages five to eighteen that have spent early mornings and late nights working and caring for animals, practicing speeches, and putting the final touches on their products, projects so that they will be their very best. Kids that have to make sacrifices and stay home on weekends to work on record books. And kids that could tell you anything you want to know, and probably more than you want to know, about a steer, chicken, plant, recipe, tractor driving, and so much more. I'm lucky to be one of those kids. For the past twelve years, I've participated in everything from the kitty goat show to exhibiting steers and swine, to speech contests, with the hope of each year being better than the last. I've met the majority of my lifelong friends through the youth fair. And I've learned lessons that I couldn't have been taught anywhere else. I had victories when I found first place in the steer show carcass contest, and I've experienced lows when my steer was just twelve pounds too light of making the fair. Each experience taught me something new. The Southeastern Youth Fair is an exhibit, or showcased not for the animals but for the students. The fair gives youth the opportunity to be held responsible from a project from start to finish. You will find students that have learned the value of a hard-earned dollar because of tracking inventory and learning depreciation in their record books, a firm handshake when they talk to buyers, and eye contact when they look and answer questions for a judge during showmanship. No matter what career path these students decided to take, they're being prepared to be leaders. The Southeastern Youth Fair continues to be the largest all-youth nonprofit fair in the state of Florida. Our youth fair would not be possible without the support of our two-hundred-plus volunteers that give their time to an organization that they believe in. If you are lucky enough to know someone that is involved in the Southeastern Youth Fair, then you know what an impact it has had on his or her life. All over our county are leaders that were past participants of the Southeastern Youth Fair. There are bankers, elected officials, businessmen and women, exceptional teachers, and most of all, well-rounded community members who volunteer and contribute to what makes our hometown so great. There are also volunteer opportunities for students. Ambassadors help the fair run smoothly from day to day while others assist with ag ventures. From February 21st through the 23rd, over a thousand second graders from our schools in Marion County will have a firsthand look at Florida's major agriculture commodities during the Marion County Farm Bureau Ag Ventures Program. Students and teachers will explore interactive exhibits and attend hands-on workshops as part of the event and tour. I know some of you are planning on to volunteer your time as well, and we will look forward to seeing you there. Finally, and most importantly, I would like to invite you to the 2019 Southeastern Youth Fair that will be held February 15th through the 23rd at the Southeastern Livestock Pavilion in Ocala. I'm confident that as you walk through the barn or watch a show from your seat, you will have the feeling of accomplishment, hard work, and camaraderie that is radiating through our members. I hope you come out and make this a new tradition if it's not already an old one. I'll be personally happy to show you around. Thank you.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just have this scheduled.
Thank you.
I have them, honey. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. Okay, so now for the big finish. Here comes the unpredictable part. We're gonna bring in three students, and each of, as much as we would like to have everybody come out to the youth fair, we know that's not possible, so we're gonna bring a little bit of the youth fair to our viewing audience tonight. So we will ask our students that they could please introduce themselves and their animal.
My name is Ashley. I am Marion County Federation Officer on the Sentinel, and this is Lola, and I'm showing her the show at the Southeastern Youth Fair.
My name is James. I'm the secretary for the county of Liberty, and this is Hamilton, and he is going to be with us at the fair for secretary.
And my name is Hayden, and I'm also from the Liberty Middle School at the Bay Chapter. This is Mariah, my chicken's flying at the Southeastern Youth Fair.
Would you all mind turning around to our board?
Oh, how precious.
I see the pig.
That chicken.
His name's Hamilton, huh?
Huh?
Mariah, oh my goodness.
Have you raised Mariah from birth, from like, when she was a baby? Have you raised, have you, Hayden, have you raised? Oh, how nice.
And Hamilton is potty-trained, I found out.
Hamilton is potty-trained?
Hamilton is potty-trained.
Our pig was too.
How big is Hamilton gonna get?
How old, how old is? How old is Hamilton?
Here's the unpredictability.
Good. Adorable.
Wow.
The chicken is so relaxed.
Well, thank you. Thank you. We enjoy it so much. Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you guys next week, too.
Yes, thank you so much.
Feel free to bring a miniature horse.
You do?
We'll get him a little diaper.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
I recommend approval of the agenda for the February 12th, 2019 School Board Meeting with materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Thank you. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Cummings, second by Ms. McCall. All those in favor, vote by voting aye, or signify by voting no. And the motion passed five-zero. Mr. James Phillips, Program Specialist of Extracurricular Activities and Driver's Education, would like to recognize the North Marion High School Football Team Coach and Assistant Coaches and the team.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Mayor, Ms. Martinez Lopez, and Attorney Gibbs. It is with great pleasure that Mr. McAtter and I stand before you tonight presenting the North Marion High School Varsity Football Program for what was ultimately a tremendous 2018 season. The team is led by head coach Willie Offord, Athletic Director Dale Hall, and Principal Danielle Livinggood. Their success is a direct reflection of dedication to teamwork, commitment to each other, and hours upon hours of hard work. This team is the first Marion County Public School since 1994 to make it to the state championship football game. While reflecting with Principal Livinggood on this accomplishment, she stated, "All football coaches and student athletes strive to play fifteen weeks of football, and specifically for a state championship." This team was able to accomplish that. Their performance on the field created many great memories for all involved. Congratulations to the team and their coaches for a job well done. Lastly, we would like to give a big shout-out to all those Colt fans with their Northside pride who supported the team throughout their state championship quest. Thank you, guys.
Well done, sir. A lot to share. Good, sir. I bet we have a running back here, right? Congratulations. Way to go. Good job. Keep working hard. Congratulations. Well done. They're still coming. Congratulations, honey. Well done. I think someone was coming through twice. They're still coming. They're still coming. Congratulations, sir. All right. Thank you for your hard work. Keep it up in line. Hi. You got it. Well done. Congrats. Thank you. Keep working hard. Congratulations. Thank you. Keep it up. Way to go. Goodness, we have so many. Well done, sir. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Well done. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much. Congratulations. 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 Thank you all so much. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
Everybody's looking this direction? Give them a round of applause.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
May I have a motion to adopt a proclamation proclaiming the month of February as Black History Month?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Cummings, second by Nancy Thrower. All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose, like sign.
Ms. McCall?
I did.
That's a yay.
It's not yay.
We can't, don't have it.
I voted.
Did you vote? Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and the motion passed five-zero. Dr. Mayer, you wish to make some remarks?
Yes, please. So Mr. Christian, our Director of TV and Media Productions, is going to come up, and joining him is our new Director of Title I Programs, Ms. Boston, and she's gonna give some remarks as well, and she's also gonna give some updates on our Black History Museum at Howard Academy, which has been a long time coming. We're very excited about tonight.
So I have the honor of reading this. It says, "Whereas Black History Month shares the historical and present contributions of African-Americans, whereas Black History Month began as Negro History Week in February 1926 in the United States as a supplement to the school curriculum. Through the work of African-American scholar Dr. Carter G. Woodson, his aim was to encourage a greater awareness and understanding of the African experience and contributions in America, Africa, and throughout the world. Whereas later in the 1960s, the week expanded into Black History Month to commemorate a more balanced and accurate picture of Black history, and is celebrated during the entire month of February as it coincides with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass, which is February 15th, and Abraham Lincoln, which is February 12th today. Whereas throughout Black History Month, we celebrate the many contributions African-Americans have made to our nation, and we are reminded of their courage and struggle to change the hearts and minds of our citizens. While much progress has been made, we must continue to work together to achieve the promise and vision of our great nation. And whereas the School Board of Marion County recognizing its own diversity and that of its employed workforce and entire student body, will continue to honor Black History Month to enhance equity and diversity. Now therefore, the School Board of Marion County, Florida proclaims February as Black History Month, and each of you has signed and dated it, the 12th day of February." So Ms. Boston, it's my privilege to present this to you, and I know you have some comments that you would like to make.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayor, Mrs. Martinez Lopez, Attorney Gibbs, good evening. It is my honor to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Marion County community as we pause to celebrate Black History Month, recognizing the historical contributions and accomplishments of African-Americans. This is an especially exciting time in our community as we prepare for the reopening and dedication ceremony of the Black History Museum and Archives of Marion County at Howard Academy Community Center. So for the next few moments, I would like to give you an update on the progress of the reopening. Now, it's important that you know this is a reopening as the museum was originally established in the late, in the mid-1980s to the late 1980s. So here we go. The general upgrade of the room itself is complete with new carpet, paint, blinds. We are working on changing the light fixtures, but that's going to come a little bit later. The furniture has arrived in terms of archival cabinets and artifact displays, and those pieces will have locks on them so that we can protect the artifacts that will be on display. Security system was installed today. Technology is in place. We have a widescreen TV that will run looping, it'll be a looping PowerPoint presentation. The other piece of technology is a kiosk that you can access various pieces of history at your fingertips. The original contents of the room, the Howard Academy memorabilia, local church artifacts, Paradise Park, are intact, and these are artifacts that are representative and significant to the Ocala-Marion County area. But I'm also happy to inform you that we will have additional items on loan to the community from the state that are representative of the historical impact of Black Americans at the state level. And some of these artifacts are from the Florida Museum at the University of Florida in Gainesville, and the State Collections and State Museum of History, both in Tallahassee. And some of these artifacts will have artifacts on the Alusty Battle, which was during the Civil War. There will be artifacts from the Negro Fort, which was located on the Apalachicola River, and that was in 1816. And then there will also be artifacts from various slave plantations throughout the state. The reopening has been advertised. It is free and open to the public. There have been flyers sent to all of our schools. Emails, board members, you should have received an email today. We've contacted the mayor's office, the county commission, city council, chief police, sheriff's office, city administrator, tax collector. We've tried to leave no stones unturned. We've sent out communication to our African-American community leaders. We have received feedback from some of them who will actually be participating on our ribbon-cutting ceremony. Dr. Mayer will join us for that. Mr. Cummings will be the emcee for that event. Kevin Christian is our Director of Public Relations and Media Productions. Will send out a media release later this week, and we have not left our kids out because the Westport High ROTC unit will be on board to assist us with parking on that event, that day. So I'm asking you to please join us for the reopening of the Black History Museum and Archives, next Thursday, February 21st, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, at Howard Academy Community Center, with the ribbon-cutting ceremony beginning at 6:00 PM. And we just want you to know that we don't want this ceremony to not only just be a reflection or remembrance of the past, but to become a very vital part of our future from here and moving forward. Thank you. Questions? We look forward to seeing you next Thursday.
Thank you for the invitation. May I have a motion to adopt the proclamation proclaiming the month of February to be Career and Technical Education Month?
So move.
Moved by Ms. McCall, second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose, like sign. And the motion passed five-zero. Dr. Mayor.
Mr. Christian, you're back with us. So joining you is going to be Ms. Holly Cunningham. She's our Golden Apple Teacher of the Year. She is a registered nurse and is our health occupations teacher at Westport High, and inspiration all around.
And a local celebrity.
Yes.
This proclamation reads, "Whereas February 1 through 28th, 2019, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education, whereas career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness. Whereas students in career and technical education programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase student engagement and achievement. Whereas career and technical education provides students with career exploration opportunities earlier in their educational experience, which enables them to make informed and beneficial decisions about their academic coursework, as well as pursuit of established programs of study and career pathways. Whereas leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges related to the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields, including healthcare, agribusiness, public service, energy, advanced manufacturing, and information technology. Whereas career and technical education prepares students for these and other fulfilling careers by offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education and lead to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials. And whereas ensuring that employers have access to a qualified workforce is a crucial step in ensuring productivity among the business and industry communities, as well as continued American economic growth and global competitiveness, now therefore be proclaimed, the School Board of Marion County, Florida proclaims the month of February to be Career and Technical Education Month, and urge all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the career and technical education programs in this community, and to support, participate in, and encourage the further development of these programs to enhance student engagement and learning, further student educational pursuits, and prepare students for productive living." Great words, and I'm honored to present this to our 2019 Marion County Teacher of the Year, Ms. Holly Cunningham, who knows a little thing or two about CTE programs and classes. Any comments you want to make?
Okay. Well, I've been a member of Marion County for over fifteen years now. I've worked in industry at the hospital, Dr. Feldman's group. I still work there on the weekends. But I love how our kids have this tangibility of learning theory in the class, and then getting to go out with our community partners and see that sort of come into play. Also, our community partners are able to sort of make relationships with these students, help them with their critical thinking aspects, and sort of cherry-pick those ones that are perfect for the field and industry that they are in. Again, when it talks about post-secondary, we teach CTE careers that are at a collegiate level. For example, the EKG program that I teach, if you were to take it at Auburn University, it would be $5,000. So our children, our students, are able to go ahead and get that education while they are in high school. We have amazing pass rates, and these students are not only going to, as I call Harvard on the highway, or, you know, CF College, they're also going off to universities and then coming back and making our community better. So I think CTE- So I think CTE is amazing. It's wonderful. Mr. Vanello and I have spoken how it's almost like a perspective in your pocket. You have something to go with, you can make money with it, and you can sort of make it grow as you go through college. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Frank Perdomo, instructor for We the People, would like to present information regarding the Career Academy Program taught at College of Central Florida.
Good evening, once again, School Board members. I'm going to introduce Mr. Perdomo. But first, I want to say I'm very proud of our CTE programs, and I'm extremely proud of Ms. Holly Cunningham. Holly, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Holly, but I believe you are the first Teacher of the Year, Marion County Teacher of the Year, coming from a CTE classroom. So couldn't be prouder about that. Okay, so Frank Perdomo. Mr. Perdomo teaches at the Career Academy out at College of Central Florida, and if you're not familiar with that, this program started back in the year 2000 at Bellevue High School underneath Jim Yancey. It allows our students, all of the courses are offered and they're taken out at CF. It allows our students to work toward an AS degree, an AA degree. They get nationally-recognized certification right there in the, on the college campus. Around 2005, 2006, when I first got to MTI, the Career Academy moved from Bellevue High School to Marion Technical Institute, and it was at that year that I hired Frank Perdomo. Frank was a first-year teacher then, and I'll brag a little bit about Frank. He has taken that program, and you're going to hear about We the People curriculum. At the time, We the People was isolated to just the Career Academy. Now it is, there are competitions in elementary school, our middle schools have it, and all of our high school programs have it as well. So I think you're going to enjoy this presentation, Mr. Frank Perdomo.
All right, thank you all. Good evening. Just less than two weeks ago, the governor of our state issued an executive order about improving civic education. So this is one of the paramount civic education programs, We the People, and we are leading in Marion County with this program. So, oh, the clicker. Here we go. Three highlights I want to start with are teamwork and civil discourse and highly effective instruction. So our motto for our county is developing successful citizens, and that is my main job. So this requires a civic education program like We the People that is robust and interactive, and the competition that's involved with this, too, really drives success. So we're not doing it justice if we don't go that extra step and also participate in these hearings, and I'll explain some of that. So with the teamwork aspect, we compete as a whole class, and within that, students are broken into unit groups, smaller groups, and so they work collaboratively. This is necessary for democracy. So compare this to a typical American government class where you would end with just a multiple-choice test, and there's not an emphasis on this collaboration or speaking and listening skills. So with civil discourse, that's what we're talking about. These students are addressing various audiences. We have at least two practice hearings leading up to the district competition at the courthouse in December, and we have community members come in, school officials, veterans, daughters of the American Revolution, various groups come in, and the students have to interact and talk to them about the Constitution and their knowledge of that. So, and then finally, highly effective. This is highly effective instruction in that the students are engaged, they take ownership, they're working collaboratively, like I was saying, and they take a position. So they really develop their voice through the process as well. So I'm not going to go through all of the positive press that we've received, and there are lots of links. If you would like, I can forward it to you digitally. You can also check this out on Twitter, @BeardofSteel is my handle for that, and the links to the videos are there. We were featured in the K-12 Connect videos, and WCJB 20 covered the district competition at the courthouse. There was a summary from the last School Board meeting in 2016, 2017, that I went more in-depth into the program, and the website for our program is there, too, so I can send that to you if you'd like. So we're an application-based program, and it does require that students meet dual enrollment standards. So we've grown the program, so I'm going to show you a couple highlights of that. We've also gotten press from Ocala Star Banner. They've covered our program back in 2017, 2018. We've gotten some really good coverage. Here's a picture from the 2017 competition at the courthouse. Beth McCall was a volunteer as a judge. We typically have School Board members volunteer, and so that's one of the reasons why I'm here, too, to invite you all to this year's competition at the courthouse in December. So put that on your agenda. We will invite you all to participate as judges. I also wanted to highlight this picture because in the middle there, Starlee Arndt is the Community Outreach Specialist for the Supervisor of Elections. She's a former Career Academy student, and it just goes to show that these students that we have through the Career Academy, they really become local leaders, they stay within our community, as opposed to, you know, advanced academic programs where students maybe go off to university and leave the community. Typically, Career Academy students stay within our community.
I apologize, Mr. Perdomo.
Yeah.
About that one.
Oh, you noticed someone else, too?
My son.
Yes.
My son, the one with the bow tie.
Correct, yeah. Kenbe did well in the competition, and so I think he got a lot out of it, so. We were just talking to him. He's in Oklahoma, I believe. Yep, working construction. So the simulated congressional hearing, this is the competition, is a group of students and a group of adults, judges, discussing the concepts of the Constitution. So that's it in a nutshell. The textbooks, so we were one of the first to adopt these textbooks, and the textbooks are for elementary, middle, and high school. And like I was saying, that's great. This is a first step in the right direction. We need to continue the momentum. We need to get to that point where all our classes are using the textbook and doing a hearing and competing in that way. So at the state competition that we just went to recently, there were eight middle school teams from around the state, and we really should have a middle school team from Marion County, too, to represent us. The elementary schools have been on the ball with this. So back last spring, Marion Oaks Elementary, Bellevue Santos, and Saddlewood worked together to put on an elementary hearing, and Bobby James, former career, or chair, I mean, board member, was also involved in the We the People program, and he's been great in volunteering. We expect board members to be involved. So this year, the Marion County Bar Association, led by Judge Tommy Thompson, has been leading the way in getting volunteers, too. So they have been working with lawyers and attorneys in our area to volunteer at schools and to also be as judges. So the last three years, we have placed third at the state competition, and the first year that I took over in 2017, we went to Berry University in Orlando. We competed against some top schools in the state. One in particular, Pinecrest from South Florida, has a tuition of over $30,000, and they got first place the last two years. They went to the national competition. They've been ranked in like the top 25. But this year, and this was 2018, this year, there was an upset. So we've been making headway. They did not come in first. There was a magna program from Miami that did get first place, but one of our groups was honored with the best unit for Unit 3, and Unit 3 was led by Sindel, who's here with us today. Sindel's our class president. She plays volleyball for Bellevue, and she's a firefighter, too. She's in the firefighter program. So this was a unique class that went on to the state competition. They were mostly first responders, first for our group for that, fire, EMT, and they did really well. So we're hoping to still advance even more than third place. So we also do economics and financial literacy. I want to give a shout-out to that part of our program. It's not just civics. So the second half, we focus on economics, and we've had our congressman, Congressman Ted Yojo, has come and visited our class as part of that with economics. And there are lots of opportunities for teachers to learn more about the program. This past summer, I was a mentor in Tallahassee for teachers, and we have at least a half-a-dozen teachers that did a training for We the People in Tallahassee. There's a federal grant that was just issued, I guess, for the next five years to develop these civics programs nationally. So I've got the link there for that, so we can tap into that as a resource. And finally, I want to thank the Daughters of the American Revolution, specifically the Supervisor of Elections. We've got a picture in your packets of some of them. I want to mention them specifically because they have been really involved in our class this year. Elizabeth Coleman, the first vice regent, or Roberta Aberbin, past regent and current state literacy chair, and Rochelle Girofsky, the current regent. And I didn't get the picture of the competition that we just went to into the slideshow in time, but you guys have that in your printed packet. So with that being said, if you have any questions or answers, or questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
You guys have any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you so much, Mr. Perdomo, for this program that you have grown. Our goal is to create functional contributing citizens, like Sindel, is it?
Sindel.
Sindel, I'm sorry. And what, you're just spot-on with everything that you're doing, and you're proving that Marion County Schools does in fact rock, so thank you.
Ms. Stacy, I think, did you?
I would like to thank you and your passion for this. When a teacher has this kind of passion, the students pick up on it. They, there's teachers that teach, and there's teachers that teach, and so you, your students in your room, I know, with your excitement, it makes them excited, and that's the reason they're doing so well, because they're, you're a leader. When you look behind you and no one's there, doesn't matter if you're the boss, you're not a leader, but you look behind you, and you've got students trailing right along behind you, going right with you, the courthouse and all kinds of places to do what they do, and thank you for being a leader in our community.
Ms. McCall?
I want to thank you so much, and to the students. I encourage all of you to participate in the judging. I did both the high school and the elementary last year, was unable to do it in December this year, but will be back to do it because it truly is a remarkable thing. A little intimidating when these students know so much more than you, but anyway, it was absolutely marvelous. So I encourage you to participate when you're invited to please do it.
I've done it in elementary and high school also.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it was a wonderful experience that I had, personally seeing it from a parent's point of view, those kids getting to understand the processes of our government, so thank you.
Yeah, I also, it was probably before you, I was with Buddy Oswald, I think, when he was running it, but I did judge it for two years, and to go into the courthouse, and you're absolutely correct, our students are highly intelligent and articulate, and I was amazed by them. And I also did the elementary, too, and I was amazed by our elementary students. So thank you for all you do, and best of luck with you. You're quite a trailblazer, so good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will now ask the School Board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board tonight.
Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on School Board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums were due to the School Board Secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting in the order of receipt by the School Board Secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the Board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item number six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the Board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the Board's rules.
Thank you. Ms. Elena Martins?
Yes, we have six.
Okay.
My name is Dewan Thomas, last name Thomas, T-H-O-M-A-S, 485 Northwest 45th Lane, Ocala, Florida, 34475. Also have two gentlemen here with me. I'll let them introduce themselves.
My name is Willie Jones, J-O-N-E-S, address 13821 Southwest 40th Circle, Ocala, Florida, 34473.
My name is Kelvin Davis, D-A-V-I-S, 18 Cedar Tree Trace, 34472.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice President, Vice Chair, Mr. Cummings, Board, Dr. Mayor, Mrs. Lopez, and Mr. Gibbs, Attorney. Won't take too much of your time. We wanted to come and kind of thank Dr. Mayor for being a support for the Ocala Thunder Football League. We have over, new football league this year, we had over 250 students participate, and she was able to support us to find us a place to tutor these young men and young ladies. And so it was a blessing because it was kind of difficult finding a building. She met with the Board, and she was able to support us and help us, and also provided us with tools to help the students to further their tutoring aspects and to get support. So we wanted to present Dr. Mayor with this plaque today and thank her for her support and allowing us to use Howard Academy, and we thank you so much, and we all just want to come in and present this to you today.
Thank you very much.
And I will read the plaque. It says, "Ocala Thunder, in appreciation of your sponsorship 2018." Thank you so much, Dr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Lindsey Griffin, G-R-I-F-F-I-N, of 19150 Southwest 92nd Loop in Donellen, Florida, 34432. I am a special education teacher at Liberty Middle School. I am also a mom. My son, William, is currently in the developmentally-delayed program at Donellen Elementary School. The state of exceptional student education in Marion County is obviously very important to me. Indeed, it makes up the majority of my life. My students are in a self-contained classroom for their academics, but they are familiar faces on campus during transitions, lunch, and elective classes. They are friendly. They are often outspoken. They sometimes misbehave, just like any other student. The same goes for my son, as his teachers and therapists continually assure me. They are valuable. The lives of the non-disabled students at LMS and DES would be less beautiful without them. To hear people say that those students don't belong is really disheartening. It shows ableism and ignorance where there should be support and compassion. Yes, these students need more support. Yes, they sometimes need modified work, behavior plans, or self-contained classes. Removing them from the school entirely, however, without specific data indicating the highest level of need is not the answer. Even when an alternate placement is appropriate, it needs to be done with dignity and respect toward that student. Never should it be punitive. I also have a cautionary word for those who want to implement any new initiative for ESE. Nothing about us without us. When you draft these new plans, you need to include parents, ESE teachers, and most of all, older students and adults with those disabilities. That includes autistic adults, adults with Down Syndrome and intellectual disabilities, and adults with emotional disabilities. Even if they have a low cognitive ability and a high level of support, their voices are the ones that matter the most. If they tell you that a technique that you think is successful is harmful or detrimental... If they tell you that a technique that you think is successful is harmful or demeaning, you need to listen. All MCPS students deserve to be visible and supported, no matter how much they differ from the norm. Thank you very much, and have a lovely evening.
Hi, I realize that we're passionate about our discussion this evening. I'm going to ask that you please refrain from clapping. Thank you.
Mark Halcomb?
Mark Halcomb, H-A-L-C-O-M-B, 26 Banyon Track, Ocala, Florida, 34472. Members of the board, Dr. Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here this evening, although I wish it were under better circumstances. Much has been said and is being said about ESE programs in Marion County public schools. ESE programs serve many more than just those children with special needs. I have had in total four children in Marion County public schools, with three currently enrolled. My oldest daughter is in ninth grade in a Cambridge ACE program. Our son is in seventh grade, also in a Cambridge ACE program, and was involved in a gifted program throughout elementary school. My three oldest children have all won the American Legion Award, two of them in fifth grade and one in eighth grade. My youngest daughter is currently in a pre-K ESE program at a Marion County elementary school. Almost four years ago, our daughter was born a month premature via an emergency C-section after an eight-year-long journey of trying to have a child, and a pregnancy that brought my wife multiple instances of bleeding, pain, possible miscarriages, and a head-on collision, all of which was done without taking prescription pain medications due to my supervisory position with the Department of Children and Families. When she was approximately a year old, we started noticing small differences between she and other infants, much of it sensory, whereas most infants can't wait to dive into their first birthday cake and get icing all over themselves. She does not like the feeling of icing on her hands, and in fact, did not like the feeling of most foods on her hands. Over time, we noticed her not wanting to be around other children or play with them. While she was able to speak words, she was not forming sentences as she should have been able to at her developmental level, part of which was due to the fact that unbeknownst to us, she was almost completely deaf in one ear due to several ear infections and needed corrective surgery, which restored her hearing. She frequently would engage in periods of self-stimulation, which would last anywhere from a few seconds to 10 seconds or longer, and she would also hit herself when she would become angry, or if we verbally redirected her. After many meetings and appointments and evaluations and self-education on the matter, we concluded, which was confirmed last July by a pediatric neurologist, that our daughter was on the autism spectrum. Those same meetings and evaluations also told us that our daughter was intellectually and cognitively on a genius level. The night our daughter was born, while her mother was recovering at Tallahassee Memorial and she was beginning her eight-day stay in the NICU, I wrote a letter to my daughter to be read at some unknown date and time, in which I told her that I believe she came into this world to change this world. I believed it then, and I believe it now. This August, she began a pre-K ESE program at one of the elementary schools in the district where she also participates in speech therapy. In six short months and three hours a day, our daughter went from not wanting to be around other children to being a leader. She went from speaking simple words to forming sentences. She has done this in a Marion County public school, not a charter school, not a private school, a public school. At three years of age, she knows her colors, shapes, counts to 15, knows the alphabet, sings songs, and shouts "Go Gators" when she sees an alligator. There are some who wish to orchestrate from within the complete dismantling of the public school system in this county and state. There are also some who wish to remove ESE programs from public schools, feeling those children do not belong in public school. Because it's been stated you cannot reason with a person with autism, or because their autism gets in the way of proper communication. Our daughter has taught me more than any textbook or professor could ever taught, and she gives me more joy than I have ever known. If she were here tonight, she would be the smartest person in the room. In conclusion, let me remind this board of Florida statute 1000.02, section 2 subsection C. One of the guiding principles for Florida's K-20 education system is a system that maximizes education access and allows the opportunity for a high-quality education for all Floridians, as well as Florida statute 1000.05, section 2 subsection A, which prohibits the discrimination of any student or employee in a state system of public K-20 education based on race, ethnicity, national origin, gender, or disability. My daughter belongs in Marion County public schools, as do all the children in Marion County, and ESE programs belong in Marion County public schools. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Williams, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S. My address is 911 Northeast 39th Court, Ocala, Florida, 34470. The support of our children should be number one priority, but we don't always get that. There was a time this year that our son did not want to even go to school. There was an incident that occurred where the EBD and ESE teacher and the dean at Ward Highlands put their hands on our child, leaving severe marks all over his body. That's not how we want our children to view school. We need to have a better support system in place for them. When I had expressed that to administration at Ward Highlands, I was told by the dean, "Yeah, in a perfect world," and we're far from that. We need to have more support for the teachers and the administration, and they need to listen to the parent concerns. After several calls to the school, sleepless nights with my child, and many, many tears, we have found an amazing teacher this year. Ms. Rose is our son's teacher at Ward Highlands. He's doing so much better in her class, to where she even tells us at times, "I don't know why he's in here." It's because he's got a good teacher, and somebody that's there for him to support him. When the teachers have the proper training and support, it shows through the student. Mr. Prophet was there for Isaiah in first grade as his teacher, and he's now his friend and part of his support system. Ms. Smith was there for him in second grade last year, and she's now one of his go-to people at Ward Highlands. The teachers that are seasoned teachers, that have the support and have the training, can help handle our children, can help better guide them. When they're put in classrooms with first-time, brand-new teachers, or teachers that don't have the experience, or the training, or the support, they don't always become as successful as they could be. Our son has got Asperger's, ADHD, and ODD, and at times, it's very difficult, but it's something, he's still a child. He is our future. If our schools and our classrooms have the better support and have all these teachers, anybody that our children would come in contact with throughout the school day, if they have that training, then they would be able to help our children so much better. If you have a school with an ESE or an EBD classroom, I believe that every single one of those teachers, staff members, administration, anybody should be specially trained, so this does not happen to another child. We've had several great teachers throughout his schooling. He's in the third grade with an amazing teacher now, that we had to go through all this to have to find. And we shouldn't have to do that. Our children shouldn't be scared to go to school every day. Thank you.
Mr. Dante Prophet?
Dante Prophet, 931 Marion O'Slane, Ocala, Florida, 34473. And I work for Marion County Public Schools, Athletic Behavior Tech. I am the president of Marion, of the Union for the Marion Educated Support Professional. I was, I've been doing this for about 10 years now, working with kids that are, that have emotional behavior disability. A lot of times in my classroom, you have those kids, you have some kids that are SLD, and you have kids that have high functioning autism. When I was on the county level, I traveled school and I worked with kids of all levels. I could tell you one thing about our special needs kids, they're not political. They're not at all. And I truly believe when you have units that are specialized, even when you have hub schools that are specialized, with the right training, with the right support, they will be successful. I have no doubt in that. I have no doubt that we must be able to train our teacher, train our paraprofessionals, give them the support that is needed to make sure that our kids are successful. I want every kid on our campus, regardless of a label, regardless of their general education, regardless of their special needs, to feel welcome and to feel safe on our campus. I truly don't feel that there's anybody, our superintendent or any school board that wants to remove ESE programs from our school district. I know that's not true. I got to know all of you on this board really well on the campaign trail, so I truly believe there's no one like that. What I think we have to do is to sit down, go back, listen to the people on the school level, listen to the teachers, listen to the behavior analysts, listen to the principals, work together, and see what can we do to support our school. Here's the deal, when it comes down, in my opinion, and when I do the research, when it comes down to it, we need to have hub schools. We need to have schools that specialize in certain substanances to make sure that we can concentrate that support. Here's the deal, I know myself, many teachers, many pairs, many behavior techs, many behavior analysts, many behavior specialists, many ESE specialists, many administrators, is willing to go down this road to make sure that all our schools are supported with the programs. But there do need to be some teamwork. There do need to be, you know, some listening to one another. I had the distinct privilege to lead a classroom full of kids that was, you know, "Oh, this kid, he has a behavior issue, he has a behavior plan," kids that threw fits, kids that want to curse you out, kids that want to hit you at the beginning. At a school that would be considered a hub school, we had a great principal, we had a great AP, we had a great dean, I had great teachers, I had a great behavior specialist, and when that support was concentrated there, it worked well. At the beginning of the school year, to have my behavior specialists and behavior tech there, when our numbers was high, because they was high at the beginning, was great to provide, and then they provided additional unit. I couldn't do it. I could only imagine, you know, if we had these units spread out, it wouldn't work out as well. And here's the deal, they came in my classroom with the one goal that I want you to be able to work out and get into a general education class where the best instruction can occur. So with that specialized instruction at Ward Highlands and Osceola Middle, we got to move those kids out to be able to be successful in a general education setting. The deal is that we did listen to teachers, we did listen to parents, we did listen to paraprofessionals that provide just incredible support in the classroom. My ultimate hope, and which I have no doubt that this will occur in Marion County, because I do know all your hearts, is that we're going to work together, and we're going to make sure that these hub schools work, and they work properly, and they work for the kids most of all, and they work for the teachers and listen. So again, I love these programs, I want them to be supported, I want us to listen to the staff that's there, and I also want us to kind of give everyone, kind of like a benefit of the doubt in a sense, that we are here to work for the kids. So let's increase these units, and thank you so much for your time, and let me speak in front of you. Have a great day.
Do we have another?
One more.
Is it the same topic?
Yes. Myra Catherine Report?
Yeah, I'll spell both of my names for you. My first name is Mara, M-A-R-A. My last name is Rajput, it's R-A-J-P-U-T. And my son Reagan is six years old, and he started speech therapy at 18 months. He started the school, which was the ARP program, at age two and a half, where he received speech, occupational therapy, and physical therapy. And at age three, he started at Fort McCoy School in the ESE program, and that went very, very well. He was there for two years. Things didn't go as smoothly when he started kindergarten at East Marion, the fall of 2017. He started in one classroom, and then classrooms were switched around after two weeks. That makes it kind of hard for kids to adjust to. And these were inclusion classrooms. So our son didn't adjust well to staying seated for long periods of time, and he responded with stimulating behavior. It's called stimming, you know, for kids with autism, you know, spinning and, you know, getting up and walking, and, you know, sometimes making noises. But for about two months, between August and October, he brought home papers daily, which were evaluation sheets, mostly with frowny faces or straight faces, which he read every day on the bus. So like, I guess the main complaint is the teacher was untrained in how to deal with his needs. After the, sorry, after the diagnosis in October of 2017, I asked her not to fill in the spaces, and she complied, but my son felt the faces should be filled in, so he did it himself in crayon, filling in the frowny faces and saying, "I'm, I get frowny faces because I'm a bad boy." And I did, you know, provide some of the teacher notes. Reagan keeps making noises, even though I asked him to stop several times today during instruction. Reagan keeps making weird noises throughout instructional time, even though I asked him to stop. He would not do any work without supervision. So a couple of times, you know, she kind of referred to, you know, "He's making weird noises," which is kind of, you know, not the right way to phrase it. You know, distracted, not doing work. Basically, it was like two months of negative feedback, you know, like she didn't pick up anything that, you know, he did well. So, let's see. You know, one day I took him to the doctor, and he returned to his class, and she thought it was worth noting that he came in excited, which made him too loud. You know, I was told that he has a tattling problem, and he narrates everything that goes on in class, you know, spinning. So she basically just really didn't know how to handle the behavior. Let's see. So I was, you know, blessed to find out about the Sonder Academy, which recently is a private school that opened up. So, you know, the Sonder Academy is about a half hour away, and East Marion is about 10 minutes away, but, you know, we'd take him, we'd drive him every day to Sonder Academy. You know, the first note that I got home from Sonder Academy is Reagan's such a joy to have in our room, and he's so smart and creative, and we can't wait for the rest of the year to spend time with him. And, you know, he's six years old now and reading at a sixth-grade level, and, you know, he's learning about the water cycle, and, you know, he can tell me about mammals and amphibians, and, well, I guess, East Marion, I mean, Fort McCoy, just, in my opinion, did a really good job with their ESE program, but, yeah, the inclusion program at East Marion, yeah, wasn't really working out. I mean, I did include like an extra copy of the notes, if you wanted me to. I didn't make, you know, enough copies for everyone, but I give.
If you give a copy to the attorney, he could see that we get some.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that everyone? For the parents that expressed their concerns tonight, I would like to invite you to our roundtable discussion on February 28 at 11, is it 11 or 11:30? 11:30. So we would love to hear feedback, your ideas. I thank you for being candid and coming up and telling us, because if we operate in secrecy or we're not aware of what's happening, we don't know how to correct or fix issues that are taking place in our schools. And again, I look forward to seeing you guys on that date. Thank you.
And as the board member, I would like to second that. Thank you so much for coming.
Okay. All right, we're going to move forward. All right. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda, agenda items C9.1-C18.3 as submitted?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cummings?
Second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thrower. All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose like sign. And the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the December sixth, two thousand eighteen administrative briefing and work session?
Amen.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose like sign. And the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the December eleventh, two thousand eighteen school board meeting minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thrower.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mc, Ms. McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose like sign. And the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the December eighteenth, two thousand eighteen special administrative briefing and work session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Cummings, second by McCall. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. Those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose like sign. And the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to remove from the table the job classification description for state reporting specialist?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose like sign. And the motion passed five zero. This item was discussed during the February fourth, two thousand nineteen special administrative briefing and work session. Is there any additional discussion or comments the board would like to have on item D twenty point one? Nope, we should have done. Okay, good. May I have a motion to approve deductive change order?
We have to vote on it.
We have to vote on it.
Oh, oh, I'm ahead of myself.
We have to have a motion in a second.
Oh, can I have a motion?
I move to accept the job classification description for the state reporting specialist.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Ms. McCall, second by Mr. Cummings. Thank you, Ms. McCall. All right. All those in favor signify by voting aye. And the motion passed five zero. Now we can move forward. May I have a motion to approve deductive change order zero one work authorization number eight for stage wall and ceiling repairs at Osceola Middle School returning to the district twenty-five thousand dollars?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Thrower. Any discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose like sign. And the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve deductive change order number one work authorization number three for courtyard sidewalk repairs at Bellevue Middle School returning to the district four thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-five cents?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Thrower, second by Ms. McCall. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by voting aye. And the motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to amend the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen district staffing plan for the Safe School Department?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCall. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose like sign. And the motion passed five zero. Okay, this item was discussed during the February fourth, two thousand nineteen special administrative briefing and work session, and we already did that, so, we're good. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of fifty thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and eleven cents. Twenty-five hundred dollars to Bellevue Middle School from their business partner, Dr. N H Orthodontics via Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Two thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars to Fessin Elementary School from Fessin School Alumni Association. Twenty-five hundred dollars to Fessin Elementary School from their business partner, Allstate Construction Inc. via Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Fifteen hundred dollars to Forest High School from Stephen and Darcy Shaddix. Thirteen thousand nine hundred one dollars and zero, or one cent to Madison Street Academy from Madison Street Academy P T A. Sixty-two hundred dollars to Madison Street Academy from Madison Street Academy P T A. Display fire hydrant valued at twelve hundred dollars to Marion Technical Institute from City of Ocala Engineering and Water Resources Central Lines Division. One thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars to Marion Technical Institute from Marion County Building Industry Association. One pregnant thoroughbred mare with a foal due to be born in February valued at ten thousand dollars to North Marion High School from Bobby Jones Equine. I wonder if it's been born yet. Five thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from City of Ocala. Two thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from India Association Cultural Education Center of North Central Florida Inc. One thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars, ten cents to Vanguard High School from Florida F F A Foundation Inc. May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thrower.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by voting aye, and those that oppose like sign. And the motion passed five zero. Ms. McCall, would you like to?
Absolutely. It's always great to be able to say thank you to those that support our school district that go above and beyond what's expected, or, and sometimes nothing's expected and you continue to do it. So thank you. It means a lot to our students to have those extras in their classrooms, and a lot to our teachers. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, February twenty-first, two thousand nineteen at nine A M. The purpose of the work session is to receive an external audit presentation per Viscray and Co. and review of Ocala charter school contract, construction projects, update staffing plan, two of three, bus lease purchase update, Francis Marion Military Discussion, magnet school locations, library materials, and appointed superintendent. Okay, and we'll begin with our concerns or comments, and Dr. Mayor, we'll begin with you.
Awesome, okay. This is one of my favorite board meetings of the year because of, of the youth fair and, and just seeing the kids come out and how professional they are and how well spoken they are. And so just another reminder about that, that it's starting this week, they have a carnival and that'll start tomorrow, and it runs through the seventeenth, and then the actual fair is the fifteenth through the twenty-third, and, and it's free, and it's awesome. It's an awesome time just to celebrate young people and to see what they're doing, and there's so much, including they do crafts and, and the cooking and the roosters. The roosters and the rabbits are just amazing as well, and I've got a special place in my heart for the Lucky Learners Four H Club as their, I sponsored their hog while she's a pig, because she's a girl, but her name is Lulabelle, and so she will be there too. So when you stop into the fair, please stop by and see Lulabelle and scratch her behind her ears and tell her I said hello, so. So that's coming up. I met with, gosh, a legend, and, and you'll recognize his name, Guy Marwick. Okay? I met with him and a colleague about a week ago. There's an initiative that he's working on for the Silver Springs area where they want to build an environmental center, and so that will be something that, that adds to the educational value of, of that area. It will not only bring in ecotourism, but it'll help our students. So they're moving forward with that. I'm sure that you'll hear lots about this coming up. I'm going to write them a letter of support because they have said that they really want to work with our, our high school kids, and I see it as an extension of the great things that are happening at the Silver River Museum, and they agreed. So as this moves forward, they'll be working with our curriculum folks so that we have this seamless education track from the elementary through the high school. So just be looking for that, and he'll be sharing more about that as it progresses. It's still in the developmental stage, but what an exciting time just for that area. Math, the math counts competition was last week, and last Saturday as a matter of fact, and that is a, a celebration of math, it's like the Math Olympics for our middle school folks. And Howard Middle School won the competition, but that was the shirt that they made. I thought that was so clever. Did you see that? I just thought that was so clever. So congrats to, to our, our middle school math curriculum folks and all the work that they put into that. Carrie Renfro, Christine Strickland, Jen Leeds, they just, they just worked so hard on that, and it was a great event and well attended, and it's just great to see there were principals, teachers coming out to support, a ton of parents, and it was just a great afternoon. Also, this past week, we had our science fair, the, the regional science fair award ceremony was held here for the surrounding counties, and our, again, our curriculum team did that under the, the lead of Tia Brown, and that was a great event. We had the, the judging and the displays out and on top of the world, and then the ceremony was here this past week, and another, another great event, and we thank Sumter County for helping with us, and, and absolutely our curriculum team for leading that. Now coming up, we have some more great events. We have our spelling bee, and that will be February twentieth, and that will be held here in our auditorium as well. It's a partnership that we've had for many years with the, very specific, the General Federation of Women's Club, the Women's Club of Ocala, because there's a couple different women's clubs. So I want to make sure that they get the credit for partnering with us, and that will be at six P M. here in the auditorium. And this event, again, our curriculum folks are, are leading it up, and participants from all the middle schools in Marion County and our charter schools and private schools are participating in this, and it, it's a lot of fun, too. It really is, and it's amazing to me that, to some of the words that exist in our language, and so that's a fun night to celebrate that as well. And right after that, we've got our history fair, and again, our history fair with our curriculum folks, congratulations to them on hosting this as well. This year, our history fair is on February twenty-seventh, that is a half day. So as soon as school is over, our students will be coming over to the east offices, they'll be setting up and building too all their displays. The judges are coming in, we have a ton of community judges, we're so grateful for them. And then the awards will be in the M T, M T I auditorium that night, and this year's theme, the two thousand nineteen theme is triumph and tragedy in history. So all of the displays will be on that, and, and what's great about the history fair is it's not only the typical displays, you know, the, the trifold displays, but they do websites, they do, they'll do dance interpretations, all sorts of ways to express history. So again, February twenty-seventh, and that will be over at M T I. There, that's for you as well. And robotics, we're hearing a lot about robotics, and I want to say congratulations to Mr. Ness at Bellevue Middle School for leading his team to the state competition, and that will be held February twenty-third in Jacksonville. He's taking a team of twenty kids up there, and he works on robotics all year round, he is just so committed to that program. I was, I attended their competition in December, and it was just amazing how articulate and how the depth of knowledge of these middle school kids. He had judges from all across the state come, and, and many were leading scientists in the field, you know, Lockheed Martin and folks of that sort, and the judges raved about the quality of work and the character of the kids, and I saw that when I was there too, just their support of each other in their group as well as the robotics in general. It was great to see them. And these judges said that the kids enthusiasm and their willingness to help others really shown. So we're excited that we're taking that team up to, to Jacksonville on February twenty-third. Then looking ahead to April, just to get this on your calendar, the Commissioner's Academic Challenge happens in April, and this event has been in place since nineteen eighty-six, and it's like a trivial pursuit for high school kids, it's trivial, but these, these students come from all over the state, they, each district has a team, and this year, our team is comprised of students from Westport High and from Vanguard High, and Dr. Cruz at Vanguard is leading the charge, and we're excited about that, and that's April eleventh to the fourteenth, and I'll have more information on that later. And we need to mention that Thursday is the anniversary of Parkland, and we received an email from the Sheriff's Department, and just, just for peace of mind on that day, there'll be extra law enforcement at every school, every campus. We will be pausing at the moment for just a moment of silence. Every school will be asked to do that. Thank you to Mr. Christian, who, who wrote very developmentally appropriate scripts for each elementary, middle, and high, just to explain why we're pausing for a moment. And so that's how we will honor that day, as well as all the districts across the state will be doing that as well. And now is also a good time to say, Officer McBride, we're so grateful for you. Thanks for being here tonight, and also you are our S R O at Oak Crest.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so you get a lot of happy during the day, but it's good to see you again, and thanks again for being here, and we keep you and your colleagues in our hearts, so. And I just have to share a couple of books, because I'm so very excited. So with the youth fair, do you all remember James Harriet? Okay, you do? Okay, all creatures great and small? Okay, so just this time of year, I like to go back and reread some of his books, and he was a vet in Yorkshire, England, and when, this was like a rock star moment, bucket, bucket list moment for me, when we lived in England, I was able to go and see where he lived, and that is just something that I will always remember. And his novels, as you see, they're written for adults, he was a vet, and, but they were turned into picture books as well. So those picture books are out there, and I would encourage those of you with, with young kids to take a look at the books. Some of the great stories from his novels were turned into picture books, and they're just, just lovely. And then Monday is President's Day, and of course, our district offices are closed, so just a reminder of that, and in keeping with President's Day, my gosh, if you have not read George Washington and the Secret Six, it is fabulous, it's about the first spy ring in, in our nation's history, and how six regular people helped Washington win the war, and, and one, one woman, her identity is still hidden, we don't know who she was, but the others, we know who they are and we give them kudos. A great book, and it's also been turned into a middle school edition so that it's, it's written on that level, but, oh, just great reads, great reads, so, thank you very much.
Ms. Martinez, Stephen.
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Gibbs. Ms. McCall.
Yes, we have not had a board meeting since we had our wonderful Golden Apple Celebration. I want to say kudos to the Public Education Foundation for always, and a spectacular evening where our teachers felt very, very honored. All of our teachers of the year felt very honored, and of course, kudos to our teacher of the year and our golden apples and rookie. I have had the privilege the last couple of weeks, and will continue for another three weeks, to teach a course at Bellevue Middle School called Youth Philanthropy and Action through the Community Foundation, and it's pretty remarkable getting kids to talk about philanthropy. philanthropy and giving back to their communities. So it really is remarkable. I enjoy teaching it. I try to teach it every year, at least one or two classes, but I decided to take the whole session for Bellevue Middle this year. So it's remarkable, and our kids have great hearts. They have a lot of passion, and they have great hearts. And it's been fun getting them to come out of their shell about what is philanthropy, and it's not just about money, it's about time and making a difference. So that has been just so, so much fun. Also, the Public Education Foundation, the same week as right after Golden Apple, they had their Take Stock in Children Classic, which raises scholarship dollars for those Take Stock in Children scholars that we have. For those of you that don't know, we have 200 students in that program. And in my mind, it's the best dropout prevention program in Marion County, partners children with mentors. I've been a mentor to two young women, still stay in touch with them. We are currently in the process of reading through applications. We have 50 slots, and we had over 300 kids apply. And we only have 50. We graduate 50 and put 50 more. If we raise more money, ladies and gentlemen, maybe we can have more children in our program. So it's truly a remarkable, remarkable program. I also wanted to give kudos through the robotics program. The Institute of Machine and Human Cognition, IHMC, has been working with some of our teachers and teaching them about robotics. And it's a partnership with the Education Foundation and a private donor in Marion County. And several of our schools have been trained, and they're now putting these robotics in the schools. And it really is wonderful. And then yesterday, I had the privilege of meeting with a representative of Junior League who has partnered beautifully with Oakcrest Elementary this year. They have done a remarkable job. They will keep some of that partnership, but they're looking to partner with another school next year, so we're working on that. So lots of really good things. And I encourage our parents that were here tonight to please join us at our workshop, our ESC workshop. We would love to have you there with your input. Thank you.
Ms. Stacy.
Well, unfortunately, we had an illness in the family, and I did not get to enjoy the Golden Apple with everyone, but I'm so excited about the results. It was nice to meet her tonight and sharing the joy of that. And I guess that's all that I have to say tonight. I'm not really feeling real good tonight, so I'll pass.
Mr.?
Yes. You know you live in Marion County when a $10,000 horse gets donated to the school system. I thought that was really neat, being the horse lover that I am. We continue to be busy and getting around. I first wanted to share that Evergreen Elementary School is one of my schools. I've been spending a lot of time there. I was fortunate during Literacy Week to get to read to the school about worms from a worm's perspective. So that was more than interesting, I must say. In the meantime, we are trying very hard to get more and more volunteers. It's proven that the more volunteers help our schools, the better the schools do. I've been working closely with Mr. Livingston and the rest of the staff. Mr. Livingston has shared a table of volunteer needs, including the teacher, the grade level, time of day, and what subject. And I think this is really important when you're trying to draw volunteers, so they know what they're getting into, and they're working with a population that they feel comfortable with. So first and foremost, they have to have a volunteer application on file. It looks like a lot, but it gets you in the door. And anyone can volunteer that has a clean record, and the door is open, we need you. And through this outreach with several community organizations, we are starting to see more volunteers come in to Evergreen to work directly in the classrooms and support the teachers and give those kids the role models that they need and that positive encouragement coming into testing season. So that's definitely an encouraging thing. And I was able to also slip out to Romeo Elementary School and do some reading with, I think it was first and second grade classes. And that book was about snow. And it was interesting to hear from some of the kids. Some had never seen snow before, some had. But it ended up resulting in an impromptu singing of Jingle Bells. So you just never know when you work with kids what's going to happen. And that was a lot of fun. Gosh, keeping going and getting back to the horse theme, maybe some of you have seen in the Star Banner that Marion Therapeutic Riding Association and Hillcrest School, after 34 years of partnership, has parted company, and there's several reasons to that. Irma, Hurricane Irma, was the final blow. But when it really comes down to it, MTRA has been our partner for 34 years, free of charge, to Hillcrest School students. And 10 years ago, they expanded their program out to the Florida Greenway, where they are now serving a multitude of folks in the community, including my mom rides there in their Silver Saddles program. So I certainly wish them the best of luck in their future. It was a great run. And whenever doors close, windows open, and therapeutic horseback riding is just such a wonderful activity for our kids. What is Marion County horses is such a, is a social activity, it's a learning activity. So we have already been thinking about options and reaching out to the community. And so far, the community feedback has been incredibly important. And when I say feed, I mean it literally. We're already getting offers of donations for feed, anything that the community can do to help get therapeutic riding back at Hillcrest School. So while it likely won't be with MTRA, it's going to be with somebody. And I'm very much looking forward to establishing a partnership with a new group. So there's going to be more to hear on that for sure. Let's see, moving along, just a couple more quick notes here. I had the, just the opportunity, and it was great to visit the Department of Juvenile Justice students that are in detention. I think a lot of people don't realize when we talk about the public school system, all means all. And our doors are open to any student that wants to walk through them. And the level of dedication and what I witnessed walking through a secure facility and meeting the kids, and yes ma'am, no ma'am, it immediately made me think, oh, gosh, I hope whatever you did is something you can overcome, because truly, you have lots and lots of potential. So I hope to see all of them again on the other side. And I was able to quickly visit Marion Military Academy as well. And they continue to have challenges, but they certainly have had a lot of successes. So it was good to get a chance to walk through and get a personal visit with that program. And they welcomed me with open arms, so I appreciate that. And let's see, our work as a board continues on the hiring of a superintendent. It's been very collaborative. We're right on track. We've made a lot of good headway, and so we're moving forward with that. Again, I want to thank Ms. King for having the opportunity to be the chair for the External Operator Search Committee for Oakcrest Elementary School. And what that means is, is that if Oakcrest does not earn a C or higher this year, that we will have to choose an external operator. And we have to have that contract in place before school grades come out, so that we're ready if we need it. Hopefully, it'll just be a very well-done process that sits on a shelf, because there are, I think, 20, 22 steps, and we're right on track with step number 15. And it's been an incredibly collaborative process. We've had a community member, a parent, the principal, both union reps from MEA and the MESP for support personnel and teachers. We have the deputy superintendent, myself as a school board member, a couple of district folks, Mr. Gibbs. And we are actually a couple of days ahead of schedule with that long process. And this last year, I think we had four that we invited to present to us. Three showed up. This year, we have seven that we're going to want to talk to. And you always learn by doing something the first time. And I think that our presentation questions and our interview questions are really targeted. And whoever comes and says that they want, let's just say for math purposes, $500,000 of taxpayer money, they're going to have to show us that they're really going to be able to do the job. So I'm grateful for everyone on the committee and what they have done to give us input and develop the process. And let's see. Mr. Cummings and I, we went to the School Finance Forum and Training, which was a day and a half of all things school financing. And when you're working with a half a billion dollar budget, over a half a billion dollar budget, you know, kids and dollar signs go together and everything that it takes to run a school system. So it was definitely in-depth. And I learned that our school system undergoes 34 separate audits, depending on what's being audited and what time of year. And the oversight is really pretty incredible. And at the same time, it's up to us finally as a board to make the determinations of what we feel is best for the schools, with a lot of considered input from our community. And the more the community is involved, the better our school system is going to be. So please keep your expectations high for us. And I know I'm missing something, but last but not least, I continue to really enjoy serving on the Marion County School Board, and I'm sure I'll see you out in the community soon. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings.
Ms. Stacy, throw us a lot.
As I want to do.
Very good. Listen, it's a joy to always...
Get an oxygen nail.
It's always a joy to serve the citizens of Marion County, especially the students of Marion County on this school board. We have been very busy. This board as a whole has been very busy, making sure that we're doing the things that we need to do that are pertinent to the students and the teachers and everybody that's involved with this Marion County school system. I'm just confident that we are moving in a positive and a good direction. We're in a good place, and we're moving forward to some better places. And I'm looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to how we have been working well with the community. And I thank the community that came out tonight and spoke. We hear you, and we look forward to you guys coming out and hearing more from you in the workshops. Please don't hesitate to come to the workshop. I do want to, been busy visiting different schools out and about. It doesn't make a difference whether the school's in District 3 or not. All schools matter in Marion County. And we've been hitting all of them. I think all of us have been hitting different ones. And I'm just a joy to be able to get to the schools, to talk to the students, to talk to the teachers and the principals. And I continue to look forward to it. This week has been extremely, extremely gratifying. We've been out to Harborview this month, yesterday, and Oakcrest this morning for the Raise Bad Projects, the fans, fitness and nutrition in schools. A very, very great project. Ms. Heather Wyman and Ms. Rachel Roper, we want to thank them for what they're doing with that, because sometimes kids need to find out where the food actually comes from. That it didn't just show up in the grocery store, that somebody had to grow it. And just to see these kids getting out, getting their hands dirty in the soil and messing around with that stuff is great stuff, and it's a great educational tool for those kids. So we're grateful for that. Also, I had the opportunity yesterday to go out to Marion Technical College. Awesome, awesome place. I remember when that place was a shirt factory. I remember when it was a shirt factory. I was a very little kid. But I remember that, that I remember going in there yesterday and seeing all of the great things that Marion County has to offer at MTC. I thank Mr. Vianello, Mr. Kelly, and Scott Carpenter for the job that they're doing with those students out there. There are so many programs out there that people can get into and get a great, that can lead them to a great paying job. So we want to encourage folk to go out and see what's at MTC, the welding program, the cosmetology, and the new toy that they have.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing, isn't it?
Anatomy, anatomatage or something like that, that has the cadaver and three-dimensional that you can turn and take the layers off. It is amazing to see that these kids have that type of, that type of technology here in Marion County. It's not all over the country that you have a technical school that has that type of technology. So we are blessed to have that type of thing out there. And I was just thoroughly enjoying. And Ms. Kelly, I have to tell you this, Kelly King, I have to tell you that I did do the simulator, the CDL simulator.
Oh, you did?
I did not crash. I did not crash. I did not crash.
What are you saying, Mr. Cummings?
I did well. But I had a report, so I won't say anything else about the report. But I did do well on the simulator. So there are some great things happening at Marion Technical College. And I want to encourage the community to get out there and see what's going on. You don't have to necessarily travel all over the country to get some great educational programs. We have them here in Marion County. So I want to encourage you to get out there and see those things. And then also, I'm grateful to those that came out tonight for the Southeastern Youth Fair. We want to make sure we go out and support that. I'm not an animal person, so I wasn't going down with the...
Didn't want to come in with the goat.
You can go to the arenas and watch the steer and the hog shows, and you don't have to get down into it. You can just sit up and watch.
I'll be a distance.
Marvelous.
I'll be far from it. I'll be far from it.
And the food.
The fair food.
So, but it was really good. We want to make sure that we support the youth fair. I passed by today, and they were setting it up. We're looking forward to what's going to be out there. It's going to be a great time. And then finally, it is Black History Month. I'm looking forward to the activities of us reopening the Black History Museum at Howard Academy. That school is very, very special. That place is very special to me. My father was born in 1920, and he went to that Howard Academy. So it's very special to me. Many of the people that are in that museum, I know them or knew them. And so it's very special to be able to emcee the reopening of that Black History Museum. So again, we look forward, coming to a school near you real soon. I think I'll be at Warhollins tomorrow and Marion Oaks Elementary on Friday for another fan's groundbreaking. Thank you.
The Dirt Friday?
I'm not getting in the dirt.
You'll be a farmer before you know it.
Not getting in the dirt.
That's great. Well, Pastor, did they tell you that if you do get your CDL license, that Walmart hires starting at $90,000 a year?
I did.
Wow.
I did.
I learned that. And I also learned how to drive the truck in snow and flat tires. And it rained. It was physical. I would encourage Nancy and Nancy, the Nancys, if you get a chance, go out there. It's amazing.
Yes, it's on the list.
Yeah. And I happen to be out there. We're the students, the pathway to prosperity out there. So it's a really great program because they're introducing, a short introduction of what programs we actually have, or even the college, you know. And it's just great to see students start thinking about what they may be interested in. So it's a gem for sure. Okay, we're going to move forward. Ms. McCall, this has been a long time coming, but you have a gavel with your name and your tenure on here. So without the help, it was a long time coming, and I am very grateful to Kevin and Teresa for helping me figure this out. But I don't think that people always understand the responsibilities of the chair person. And it is a lot. And so here's a small gesture and token to tell you thank you, and I wish it would have come sooner.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate this. It was an honor to be chair of this organization. And you're right, with it comes a lot of responsibility. But I like very much how our board is working together on many different things now. So kudos to your leadership. Thank you.
I think we have two great, exuberant board members.
We do.
I just love it.
We do, we do.
Thank you. All right. So I have, I do have a couple of housekeeping things that we need to work on, or at least address. I have received a letter, and I don't know if you guys have received it. And I know there's been other incidences with some other teachers. But when teachers are working and then they're going toward retirement, if there is a bonus applied, they're not receiving it if they retire or they leave the county for whatever reason. You know, I'm not really sure why we wouldn't give a teacher a bonus that was actually in the classroom, taught the entire year, made the gains, is highly effective. I mean, she even put, you know, she shows her evaluation that she's highly effective, but we tell her because she's no longer here and she's retired after 32 years, that, you know, we're not going to give her what we said. And I think we probably need to address that. It concerns me that we tell teachers one thing, and then we may be doing something different. So if we can maybe have a workshop to address this issue, because it just, and I don't think it's that many, you know.
No, and I just, I wonder if there's a policy out there that...
Is it state statute?
There is, actually. There is. I did speak with Mrs., the person on the phone. I think we all got the letter. And since she was a retired ESC teacher, I went ahead and gave her a call. And what it sounds to me like is, is that they might not be 100% aware, you know, policies are on the website and so on, but it doesn't mean that we're always well-versed on them. And it sounds like what happened, and Ms. Oliver and Ms. Gideon from Finance are going to... going to research it further and then advise us.
Good.
Or I will share.
Cause that's what I'm curious.
Cause that's, yes.
If it's state policy, if it's statute, we can't. But if it's something we as a district have decided, then we need to look at that. So if we can pop that on the agenda and address that, because these teachers work hard and to be highly effective in 32 years. So I would like to see...
Well, especially if, if, if they were here when they received that BAM score and even though they retired, they still worked that year. So that was my, that was where I was with it too, so.
Correct.
So Kelly, I'm glad you're going, that we're going to address it, because it doesn't, it needs to be addressed.
And I'll certainly report back to everyone when I hear back from Ms. Oliver and...
She'll report to us. We'll have a meeting. It's addressed now, so we're good.
Okay, good.
Okay. All right. Also, we need to update our IROC Committee.
IROC.
The IROC Committee. It is, I have had some discussion with Dr. Mike Gonzalez, who is the Chairman of this committee, and they want to update, like, some procedures, like who is in this committee where it's full of volunteers. So last week, I presented it to the Secretary to see if we could just have a working draft and, actually, Dr. Mike did, because I had him go in that direction, but I did discuss it with the Secretary and it's been halted because it needs to be approved by our superintendent, is what he was told. So I hope that we would not do anything to prevent our committee that is working diligently to make sure that we're spending our tax dollars on the approved committee.
Can you clarify this?
Oh, I do. Actually, I have an email from him and I can do that further. This is the first, you guys have heard of this. It took place last week, but as a board, we can move forward to get this document moving and so that, it was done in 2014 during the first referendum. We're now on the second referendum.
Well, and my question would be, do we need to reappoint in June to start for the new four-year referendum? So I think there's more questions than that.
There, there are, but that's what I'm saying. It's just a work-in draft and then I would bring, we'd bring that to you, but we do need to decide, do we want to reappoint?
I'm still not clear what I halted. So can we go back?
Okay. It's been brought to my attention that the Secretary, she was presented, I spoke to her about it and Dr. Gonzalez...
Who is her?
I'm not going to mention names right here. I'll mention it later. Our school board secretary in here. So I'll give a name afterwards. I'm not going to call, I'm not going to point out names, but it has been brought to his attention that she could not move forward because you had to approve what this document is. No, we can just check into it, but I just want to...
Oh, no, no, no. Oh, okay, I know what that is. No. And I think the person that was asked to do this extra work said that she wanted him to check with me to make sure she could do it. That's what it is. So let's be very clear here. Mm-hmm.
Okay. So she needs your approval, or wait, no, he needs to check with you?
Before he asks an employee to do extra work?
He didn't. I asked her.
She didn't say, she didn't say that. She said she got an email from him.
She did.
And she said, would you check with the superintendent?
Okay. Well, I spoke to her a week earlier and then I spoke with Dr. Mike and I said, will you please get in touch with her so that we can get this work-in document? And she, and I can show you the email and you know the rest. So, okay. So we need to move forward. We're moving forward, because we want to make sure that we're doing right.
I thought that board had a secretary, though, that could do that. I know when I worked on the Volunteer Committee, I was the secretary. I did the PowerPoint and everything.
All right. We're going to move forward. This is a volunteer committee and they're watching over our millions of dollars. If they ask us to update a document, we'll do so. Also, I would also like to bring up to your attention, Dr. Mary Back, in December, I asked you to please update the list for Jessica Janowitz.
Yes.
The governmental consultant, because we receive information of legislation that's happening in Tallis Hasi. And I did not receive anything until yesterday, when I guess she had to reach out to you. I've spoke with Mr. Cummings and they have not received anything yet.
And she contacted us too and she hadn't gotten my communication in December when you originally asked, but you guys are on it.
Okay. So I'm going to ask that you please make sure that every board member is updated on that and any member of the school system that needs to be aware of issues that were taking place, that maybe were on there previously before you took them off, please return that.
I didn't take anybody off.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And we're going to move forward. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through January 24th, 2019. Mrs. Martina Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their children's or their child's disciplinary matter?
Yes, we'll be going off air.
Okay. We're going to do that. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J D 19-086, J D 19-087E, J D 19-089, J D 19-090, J D 19-091, J D 19-092, J D 19-094, J D 19-095, J D 19-096 and J D 19-097, with educational services through the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year and the first semester of the 2019-2020 school year. Moved by Mr. Cummings?
Second.
Second by Ms. McCall. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by voting aye and those that oppose, like sign. And the motion passed 5-0. We must protect the privacy of students, so we ask you to identify your child according to J D 19-093, code that appears on the superintendent's letter to you. And you know what? We're going to have to, we'll go to recess.
Yes.
All right. I will be calling a brief recess to clear the room prior to discussing a student discipline matter. Parents will then have an opportunity to address the board. This is not a due process hearing. It is only an opportunity for parents to express their concerns. Prior to the board considering the superintendent's recommendation for expulsion, parents have had an opportunity to discuss options available to them. If the student is expelled, the school board staff remains available to talk with parents about the alternative educational programs available for the expelled student. This concludes the televised and business portion of the meeting, 7:27 PM.